Open the May 23 meeting of the Rutland Planning Board. First agenda item is the minutes from May 9.
Tamika, you got my email, right?
Yes, I responded.
Was that good enough for the select board?
That's fine.
Perfect, thanks. So Dick, I put in my for alternate through the select board for the CMR PC.
Good, thank you. And I have a meeting, I have two meetings Thursday night and I will express my opinion that they send as many emails to you as they do to me.
Yeah. I've still yet to get one from them. I don't feel the love.
Well, you will. All right. I don't have any changes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Uh, let's see. Second item, approval not required, A and R East County Road.
This one, the one on the bottom.
And this is the one that we thought we needed a clarification about removal of the...
Yes.
Got that one. One of the elements. Oh. There's two on East County Road tonight, I guess.
This isn't one, so... Oh, sorry, I got 176. Next. That's not it, it's the next one. There we go. Okay, so I'm only...
I used the bottom one that you had.
No, that's Ridge. That's what you said, right? Well, you don't have those. I don't have it, do I?
I didn't do a 215. Continue, it was, I don't know, I was at the, in that meeting that you were talking about, but that wasn't me.
I did bring...
That was with the guardrail being in the way and they had to get a letter to see if they can remove it.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was Fairlane?
Yeah.
Which is of course exactly...
Tonight I don't bring my bag of tricks.
Tim, it's up on the screen too.
Okay, I'll just throw this out.
Thank you.
Anyway, the remaining question was whether indeed that guardrail could be removed even though it's wrong too.
Yep.
And Dave did get a verbal guess from Joe Buckley before he left, he wanted something in writing. And Joe didn't provide it. So Tamika contacted this Chris Kalofsky.
Who's a step in?
Yeah, step in. And we have an email from him confirming, it says Joe is correct, the guardrail can be removed, it says the town has let people remove it many times in the past, if it's removed, it has to be done correctly for traffic safety.
Okay.
Good. So...
I'm making a motion that Chris become the new TPW director.
Yeah. Anyway, so I would say we probably lose a lot of the...
Sure. That's okay, because I have a copy in my email. Thank you.
So any other questions on this particular A and R then? I think that was the only outstanding thing. Because they're not going to remove the guardrail anyway.
Yep. No. And the frontage is all of this, that 35 feet really is nothing, correct?
Yeah.
It's where the driveway was though, right?
Yeah. That's probably where the driveway will be for the house, is my guess.
Yes. Believe that's what you said.
I believe...
Oh, yeah, this is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on Zoom. The engineer is on Zoom if you have a question.
Hi, good evening, John Marsh and the following board.
Yep.
Yeah, the applicant's intention would be to put the driveway where the 35-foot strip is. And I believe I had sent to Mr. George the subject design plan that was part of the conservation commission submission and then separate, 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 separate design plan that showed the actual construction. Made it to the board or not, but yeah, the intention is to put the driveway to the right.
Yep.
I guess the only question I'm going to ask the board, and this is just for firm, this doesn't create any illusionary frontage issues that we might have handicapped anybody else with?
I don't think so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. It's all in the same row, that's the one thing I...
And they could, if they wanted to, put it there.
Yes. Because they do have access, okay. All right.
Anything else? Move to endorse?
What's the wetland like right there, is it real wet or is it just...
The ConCon has already...
Locked it.
Locked it.
Yeah.
And laid it out so that where the line is...
It's not a bad question asked. Mr. Marsh, do you guys have orders of condition from the ConCon already?
Yes.
Yes, we...
So that, they've got orders of conditions.
Okay.
That usually makes me feel better when those are done by the ConCon, so...
Forestry, yeah, I see, that's good.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing silence? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Surprised Monica and Chuck weren't here to give some comment, I would have expected that.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
All right.
Now, how many of these did we have to pass back?
Oh, boy, those are stamped, aren't they?
Five is it, or something, how many is, three? Three, it has been. Do you want these? Building inspector, assessors, and then us.
Oh, boy.
Well, I'm pretty sure I've got mine out in the truck.
They still set me on that floor. And they go to record it, the color. No, no.
Oh, the green?
And right there.
One down below?
And maybe coming back, I don't know. Maybe, maybe they changed their rules, but...
No color has to be black and white?
Black and white, India ink, one mile. And all the letters have to be a certain size, so maybe it'll be lucky.
We call this a learning experience.
It's the first time I've ever seen a mile, I would tell it. Yeah, you're right.
It's not cheap to produce, that's for sure.
More expensive when you go there and they say no, and you have to come back. They get a little picky. I had the last one that we did...
Let's see, is he off? I guess he is.
He is. The, it's not, it may be lucky. I had one that, a pen, just a blue pen, you know, when we roll them up and they're laying around like this? There's a two, two...
Oh, just had a little...
There was just a line. And I had to explain that that's not part of the plan. And it wasn't, it threw any letters or anything?
It was just in the open space?
It was in the white paper, they let it go.
But they gave you a hard time about it.
But I already went in kind of like, uh-oh. I was taught very much a raindrop will make a splotch.
You don't have any...
Soon that dries.
It's got to usually dry pretty quick.
We need to have our secretary write a little note, sign off, have stickies.
What?
To cover the, be on the safe side.
Haven't been doing it lately.
Just to be, just to be careful, that's all.
I think it's a good idea to do that. Now, since the applicant is not here, I'm assuming that we would need to leave this maybe with Anita?
That's a good idea, if you want to leave it with Anita, I can contact John Marshand and see if he can send the applicant, if they're local, to pick it up.
Why don't you put that with it too? I assume Dave has been forwarding these. I hope so. I'm assuming an awful lot at this point.
Well, he's got a pile of files over there that we're going to need filed at some point.
Yeah. Okay, next we have, uh, da-da-da-da, East County and Ridge Road?
Two parcels. What that is...
Which one is that? No, this is the big one, isn't it?
This one's the big one.
So this used to be Williams Odeley's property, he sold it to Mr. Carfici. And when we did the perimeter survey of this parcel, we saw, well, that's one thing, that hasn't been resolved yet. One step at a time.
Sorry, Julian, I just saw them like, uh-oh.
This, this is more of the problem because this is the guy, I mean, look where the line used to be, it was right near his deck.
It wasn't even close to 10 feet.
Wasn't even close, wasn't even close. And the yard, the entire yard, this is a chicken coop, the entire yard goes like this. I mean, it's just completely, and before Carfici bought it, I went out there and I think Williams Odeley had it, I said, Phil, we got an issue here.
This one, this one, and that one.
I remember Peggy always talking about these over here.
And Bill said, I don't want to cause any issues. I said, well, let's talk to the guy who's buying it, if he has no issues. So it was actually the day before Thanksgiving, I met them all out there, and he says, what do we do? And I go, well, you're here, he's using this, this is your backyard, just do a swap. This is, you're not going to use this for what you want to do in here, you want to make this into a chestnut farm with some type of, this is what he was saying, I don't know what he was going to do with it or not, but with some type of a crop under it that makes a seed to make pasta.
Yeah.
And he's like, he's going to farm this.
So this is just...
It's just a swap just to make an issue go away.
And what about these two?
Those are, those are just kind of sheds that can be, they're not, they're not as bad. This was really a, the whole yard, I mean, this guy's yard was, let me tell you, when I came over here and came with and put a line, I put a couple stakes, I said, I don't even want to leave these, because it's just going to turn into a...
Yeah.
I'm talking from me to you, Tim.
Well, that deck has to be inside of 10 feet of the property line, and it's not...
Away, and he said, you're telling me this is my line? I said, unfortunately, yes.
But you're right, this will fix it.
The realtor said, the realtor said I own to those big trees. So, I'm sorry, but...
That's not what the deed says.
This is probably the first one that I've ever had, just, it just went like this. And no, everybody's happy.
Yeah, this one's good, just doing the swap.
Everyone's happy and there's no, there's no issues, so...
Yeah, okay, so this, this is part of their yard?
That is part of their land, now, there's a note that says that's going to come off of their property, it's a parcel, and be attached to that parcel, and that parcel's going to go to that one, and then they become one.
Yeah.
So nobody's encroaching on it.
So their deeds will be this property in parcel A, theirs will be that property in parcel B, the way the deeds will be written out.
That's what would happen, I mean, it was...
Chestnuts?
Chestnuts.
Yeah. Randy was supposed to go over and Harold pretty soon too, from what I gather.
It'll be like an eight or 10-year process.
Yes, they're so, young guy.
Funny in time.
Hey, young guy, and, you know. When I met him, he was very, very excited about it. It's what I want to do, and he totally, he did the, swatch his old house, it was beautiful, absolutely beautiful.
Let me ask you, because this will get recorded, right?
Oh, yeah.
What's going to, what would be the...
That's actually, this is actually, is already recorded as a piece like this?
Yeah, but this will override it, right?
That's going to override that.
Yeah, so what?
Those are still encroachments.
It's a curiosity, I don't really...
Encroachments. And, and now it's a public record that your shed's on my land.
I just was curious, I've never seen that before, especially with a pool deck, that's not a...
That's kind of why when...
Doesn't, it doesn't matter to me, because this is, this is in the building inspectors.
That's why a plot plan is usually part of a building permit, so that that won't have... That wouldn't happen, because it's, they know.
Yeah, you've got a 10-foot...
You've got 10 feet to put in, you're putting up a 12-foot building. It doesn't fit.
Was a lie, Odeley, she was talking to me about that, how the people were very angry, you're not going to allow us to have all that land you have?
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll put a motion, well...
What the hell is the Ark of Opportunity?
It's a, some kind of a staffed housing.
I don't really know about that, do I?
It's the one, it just, they just built it, right?
Oh, that's that one, that, remember they came in where, it was, okay, I remember this one, they came into us because they wanted to, it was a long...
Yes, long road to the back, and they had plowed it up and...
Yeah, I remember that.
Had a situation with it.
There's, you get reimbursed from the state for the housing there.
I'll say handicap or what do you want?
Sort of a house staffed, staffed living, what is it, group home or something?
That's it, yeah. I'll make a motion to endorse, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This will give you the rubber band. Sticky to give them a tape up. Different places, every place, everything.
No standards.
Do they sell each other the land back to each other, or it's just...
No, just a swap, no. The deed's the only thing that's really going to change. Because they're both 2.1 acres, so it's not like they're going to change any...
They kept it like that, because the new one, he just bought it, he was just, he's only been here...
See me, I'd be a smile, I can go, I'm not paying taxes on that shed.
What happens if it falls and...
Yeah, yeah, I know, Julian.
I wouldn't give you two minutes to even empty it.
Oh, God. That's going to be a copy for, for NOM.
The signature block sent to the registry?
Yeah.
That's another...
Just start signing all sorts of names.
Catch point, if they do. To see what they did to that place, they must have spent $10 million for a second time, the registry deeds, a complete redo. Because it's that, it's in the, their old mechanics building, the old mechanics tank that called Concon.
Yeah.
Well, they had a room that was, you walk in there in the summertime, it was a glass top, it was like an incubator, it was awful. You walk in there, it was about 200 degrees. Oh, it was, it was pretty bad, and they completely redid it, and they dropped ceilings down so you can see through it, and how many millions did you guys spend on this? All right, that's that. I get it.
And, okay, that, that one. Forest Hill, still postponing it? We still have nothing from Quinn.
What's going on?
We have nothing from Quinn.
This is the owner. I had him come because I couldn't bear the moves to him again. It's unfortunate.
Still unfortunate, continuing to be unfortunate.
Can we open, talk about some of the things that you may want to see, so that when we do get Quinn's letter, it's not starting from there? Some of the, just to get the ball...
Some dialogue?
Just to make sure that something that, yeah, it meets technically, but we don't want this, and we don't like that, or we want this, we want that. I mean, just, unless, let's just say, if Quinn says everything's okay, boom, approved, which I know that's probably going to happen, right, Tim?
Yeah, I'm just...
As only, I mean, we submitted this in March, and I'm, I'm going to say it, I hounded Dave, and he just kept, well, you know, we've got other things. I submitted this on March 2nd, here we at, almost June.
I don't know, he is starting Kevin, but...
And if they, if Kevin couldn't do it, then...
Shouldn't have anybody else.
But...
We, there's no other resources that we have, and it'll take three or four months to get a resource.
I don't think we even need a resource, you've got two registered professionals who drew this thing.
Doesn't work that way.
It should work that way, I don't know then why I even need to have those people if you guys don't believe them.
Well, that's for your protection.
My protection, I got nothing to lose.
They do, the two stamps do.
Then they, then we should honor them and say, what a beautiful job. So, although it's, I don't know, hopefully we can open it and at least he can get a feel for, you know, what I've been waiting for, what's, what's the...
I'm fine with that, I just don't have a copy of it, so I'm going to have to, I see a bunch of waivers over there.
Yep.
You just want all the...
Well, that's...
The first one, I just want to read the waivers, because that, that's, that's, yeah, that's all I want to do.
But I'd like to, can I present it a little bit so you can bring it up?
Yeah, 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 I just want to...
Let me bring it up to you before you worry about the waivers.
All right.
All right, so what we got, so we got to do this officially, right? So that we don't have any glitches, so you got to open a hearing and redid it's opening.
Yeah, we got to read all that.
And then it's just a continuance from that point on, so if we can do that...
Then we'll have to make sure that the public's got any questions, and we got to read this whole thing.
Yep, I'm sorry, but it's just another month, another month, another month, he was hoping to be building this thing this summer.
The hearing notice is on the screen if you need to reference it.
I'll get it, wait on it.
You really want me to read it?
Yeah, we better.
You did open, you opened up the public hearing?
As of now.
Yeah.
And with this announcement, we will play the public hearing at the Rutland Public Library, 280 Main Street, Rutland, as April 25th, 2023, at 7:30 PM, note that obviously has been postponed to tonight. On the petition of 27 Forest Hill Drive LLC for the Vennin subdivision claim, the 27 Forest Hill Drive, parcel ID 418-4X13, also referred to as Forest Hill Drive Extension Subdivision pursuant to the Town of Rutland subdivision rules and regulations, general laws, chapter 41, section 80W, and any other applicable sections of general laws, chapter 41. For more information, contact the planning board office at blah, 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 and it was advertised in the Telegram, April 10th and 17th.
Official, she's opened it.
Official. So before we even put pen to paper, I did a schematic, and we had a staff meeting that Dave wanted, which actually, we were ready in January, not to put any more pressure on this. In January, and it took me until March to get a staff meeting for this project, and we got it, and we met with, oh, were you, were you present on that? So it was Dave, fire chief, police chief, building inspector. And did any, did any of you get, were you there, Dicky?
I was, no?
You, no?
No, I was.
What the hell do we have that for? Why do we even have that meeting? All right, well anyways, we had that.
That's been the normal procedure.
We had that, so this is the piece of land, right now is this, it's, Tim?
Yeah, actually, we've got it in here, so I can look at this.
You need to see that, existing is, Forest Hill just ends.
Yep.
Right there. But it's paved as you see it, right up to, to this point. That's, that's, the town paved that to here.
It's a town road, right?
This, this is the town road to here.
That's what I'm going to ask that question of.
All right, this is a town road.
Right to the edge.
Right to the edge. But they actually paved it to a turnaround in front of the existing house, number 27. So what Mr. Beardsley would like to do is finish this road off. And put a cul-de-sac at the end, he's got enough land area to do so. There's one beautiful thing on this property, there is no wetlands I have to contend with whatsoever, zero, no, not in any buffers or any of them, everything we're proposing is up on the hill. So we had a meeting with the, with staff, and we have a little bit of a configuration, Kevin Quinn was at that meeting. I believe Kevin was at the...
Maybe.
I think he probably invited him if he could.
He might have been. But anyways, we have, we have this configuration to meet the requirements and zoning, because this building, unfortunately, this building is set a little close to, it's not in line with the others, and we got 30-foot setbacks, so we had to put a little kink in it and meet the 50-foot, and then the 60-foot radius, or the 60-foot right-of-way radius, meet all the setbacks, so that's why it doesn't just come and have a bulb, we had to kind of give it a, a curve to it. And at the time, there's the site going down. Mr. Buckley was at that meeting, and this is following the road that's there, as you can see it. And then it curves off, and we put the bulb on the end. So I said, it doesn't follow the center of the right-of-way, like the stations is 1, 2, 3, whatever, it's offset, but it's in the right-of-way. We're not proposing a sidewalk, because there's no sidewalk on Forest Hill, and if they ever did want to put a sidewalk on, there's plenty of room on this side anyways. So we offset it, that was kind of a, why, that was a good thing about that meeting, is that the DPW director at the time, which, if this was done in a timely manner, he would have been here supporting this now, but he knows what happened there, he's gone. So we've got the same width roadway as Forest Hill, put the bubble, and we've got drainage, we've, we've caught everything that we're creating, we've caught before it goes on to the existing Forest Hill, and we've done it through all stormwater management, the letter of the law, and we've got a, a small detention area, infiltration and retention, completely out of any zones, there's the wetland buffer zone, that's not a wetland, that's the 100-foot, so it's even further away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we went all the way and we showed all the houses, how they're all going to be graded out, so it's a complete 100%, this is what's going to be there when it's done. No, no guesswork.
Of course, I got to ask you the tough question.
What's that?
The stormwater management is with Kevin, correct?
With Kevin.
Outstanding.
You guys.
This existing house...
That existing house.
Is on this whole lot?
On, yes, yes, it's on lot one. Yep, we were able to make it fit. Yep.
They know that they're getting an infiltration pond in the back of their property, infiltration pond on the back.
All right. And I kept it on one lot, instead of spreading it around the whole neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah.
So... Yep. And I try to keep them as, as uniform lots as we possibly can.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
To make it, to make it work. So then we go... We got water. And then we got, the grade is, the road is 1%, it doesn't get flatter than that. You don't want to go any flatter than 1% because then you won't get the water to go the right way. So that's, you can go down to 3/4, but that's not recommended. And it comes in at 4% is the end of the road, and then it blends into 1%, so it's just very, very, very gradual. It fits into the land very nicely, there's not a lot of grading. We got sewer, and we got water, and we got power.
Existing home is on sewer and water now?
Existing home is on sewer and water. Just arrest us all the technical details of all the connections.
I'd like to see, which we typically had...
The ones I'd like to see, which we typically hadn't gotten in the past.
So, it's a, um, 262 foot extension, just to finish off the end of the road. So now, the positives that were from DPW, fire and police, right? Now it's not at that end, it's turnaround. Cause you can go in there and turn around.
Before any of the work starts on the road, the house will be raised, correct?
No, this house is staying.
No, 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 they, the next, the house in the middle, the cul-de-sac.
Oh, that's not a house, that's a swimming pool.
It's a pool, I apologize, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
So that will all be raised?
Yeah, that's all gone, that's.
Okay.
It's a pool in the shed.
To be raised, thanks.
Yep.
Kind of an awful idea, pool in the middle of a turnaround.
Maybe we can put an island and have it as fucking water, but. I've actually seen that, maybe that's a great idea, but.
No.
It's nice skating rink in winter. So that's what we got. So I haven't, I haven't got on the telephone with Kevin, but I will if this is gonna take another month and I don't have the authority to put fire under him, but I can make it, I can make it, um. I can be.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, Julian. Norm, I wouldn't have a problem if you just asked Kevin, can you give it the?
This is, uh, this should take him about 30 seconds to review.
Not the way they review these things.
Even, even the way they review it, this is such a, this is probably the simplest one that we've done.
It, it looks very straightforward.
And the good thing is that we did already get fire and police, actually, I think I even got a, a note in writing of their response, or Dave might have followed up and was very positive.
And you built a bit of a turnaround and, uh, turned back around and.
Oh, yeah. And then here's the whole beautiful future of stormwater. So, it meets it.
Well, it's approximately 18 feet, being my engineer. Is, is it actually 18 feet or is it less than 18 feet?
What's that?
The waiver says, um, the existing pavement width is approximately 18 feet.
From back of berm to back of berm?
Yeah.
It'll be 18, it'll be 18 feet from back to back. It's Cape Cod berm, so it's not like you're ripping your tires.
No, no, I'm just asking.
Yep.
I'm just looking at.
Only reason why we're gonna, we're proposing to put berm in is to get the water to go through the catchways.
But our standard is 22.
Yeah, I know, that's why.
Oh, yeah, it's wanted to match what we got. That's, that's why we did what we did.
I don't have, I just wanted to, cause I see the word approximate and I like the word is 18 feet.
Actually, we're two feet wider, existing is 16 feet. Forrest Hill, that was just been repaved by the town, you know, probably five years ago. Is, uh.
And Forrest Hill out to Maple has no sidewalks, correct?
No.
Okay. Oh, again, just going through the waivers, making sure that, uh.
No, that's.
I wanna, I wanna apples to apples.
That's why I'm, I'm glad we opened this, so you guys have time to look at that and not wait another two weeks or hopefully not one, two weeks.
Is that? I guess I'll ask the board, is this something that we're talking about changing when we get to our subdivision regs, getting rid of the RCP pipe and going to HDPE?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, cause that's more of a standard.
It's a total standard now.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. Okay. Rigid cast, is that what ours?
Reinforced concrete.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pieces, eight feet long.
That's a 1970 to 80s.
Yeah, it's not easy to work with, especially when you get into the bigger ones. It's a.
Plastic is better. Okay, I'm good with that one. Security bars, that's a standard one, we're, we're gonna fix next time around. Headwalls at the culvert ends.
So instead of a headwall, we gotta flare that. They make a piece that connects right to the pipe. Instead of being a flat piece of concrete. It's a, it's a fan that just, let's. Just, we use it, it's always used, but it's.
Yeah, that's, that'd be more, if Kevin convinces me it's good, it's good. Cause that's where I need my civil to tell me, that's not something I.
That's what we've.
And he's done that on the, on other jobs, said, listen, that's perfectly acceptable and I agree.
I've done two pro, myself, two projects in town and that's what I did on both of my projects, but I use ACP pipe.
Yeah, the streetlights, I can't give a wave, we're on, we gotta have streetlights.
Hey, wait him.
Knock yourself out.
Talking 400. We're gonna put in gas. Gas lanterns.
You gotta put gas in sport, I'm not giving you. You can do propane.
Little oil.
Your closest gas main is down at the, uh, at the, what do you call it? Drop rock, yeah. I think it's a 12 or 16 inch main.
Very a big propane tank.
Yeah, that should have to. I'm sure RJ McDonald would love that. Street trees, um, there's none, there's none on Forrest Hill right now.
Not really.
And is there, is there a lot of trees in this area that you'll be cutting out when you take?
Here's a tree clear, here's, here's, here's a tree line, so there's nothing, nothing really being cut, it's already wiped out.
It used to be a field.
Yeah, it's, here's a tree line.
I'm just asking.
Nothing's being cut here, this is our field, you get the swimming pool. Uh, no, that's, that's, that's all.
Just went through the waivers, only one I gotta get a, a Kevin a thumbs up is the fan.
Oh gosh, that's an easy one. That's good.
I just, I just went through these. Yeah. I guess to the board, I don't, I don't see anything in here that jumps out and.
I don't either.
Shoots me down. But no, we're not approving it tonight.
Almost.
Almost. Well, this, let me just say, I'm not gonna approve, I don't wanna speak for the board.
I'm not an engineer. His name on some, signature on something.
I like the slope PVC.
It's a, it's a, it's gotta be a very nice.
Copper water line, huh?
My swimming pool.
Here it is.
Change it out to PVC, but.
I was saying, unless Kevin comes up with all kinds of stuff, I don't.
I just wanted to bless the stormwater management and that's, that's the big one for me.
Yep. And it shouldn't be too, too bad.
How big is the retention pond?
Uh, scale, it's.
Expecting a lot of water or?
No, we don't expect, from my end, the engineering design end, this is for hurricane. I've built, I've, casino life, I've, I've bought property, designed and built. I got Eileen Drive, I built two detention ponds. I don't think one of them's ever seen a drop of water, it's the size of a football stadium. It's like the one on the corner, it's all grown in now, it's completely, it's a forest now, but it's fine. Cause it never saw any water when, after we built it, even during construction, there was never any water in it. So, it's, it's a, they, they really make the coefficients to make sure that the water stays, so the size is a lot bigger than it usually needs, but there's a criteria we're gonna meet and it's, and it's met. And we try to make them shallow and bigger, so it's not a big hole. You know, it's, when it's, when it's sunny out, you look in the backyard, it's gonna look like a wall.
Yep.
So. But when it's raining out, your feet are gonna get wet, I've had that comment. How come my yacht down on, on Deer Run?
Oh, yeah.
How come, how come my yacht's all wet? Your entire yacht is a detention pond and you chose to landscape it.
You had a yacht and excited once upon a time.
So that happens, but.
So I think, Julian, once, I'm looking at the road cross-section. What is the, the base and all that stuff?
Oh, you saw your, your, your criteria.
Okay.
It's got all the.
Ours is a little bit.
You got eight inches of gravel and you got.
That's why I couldn't.
You got the process, six inches, then you got inch and a, I think two inches and an inch and a half.
Okay.
Is whatever we've done.
No, no, I just couldn't read it. I just wanted to. Okay. I don't have any.
I guess we, ask to continue it and wait to get that? Then we can continue to the next meeting. Hope. I will make my. Direct phone call every five minutes.
Able to speak or I don't wanna? Um, next, I think we, we, the board, we need to open it up to public.
Oh, yeah.
I hope you're not against this.
It is, the public has a comment, a question.
I do.
Oh.
Thank you. Um, Andrew Beards is the owner. Um, so my only concern is, and I get it, I know you've lost a, a manager in this, um. Your comment just said, well, let's hope. So are we kinda just hoping that this gets attention from, I'm not sure who Kevin is, but.
Kevin, it's Quinn Engineering, it's the town's engineer that has.
That procedure move forward without. Maybe you're in a flux here, I get it, we've lost.
Well, it doesn't.
The, the big, the big problem is, the Quinn Engineering had a second engineer, Carl Holgren, who handled most all of Rutland's business. And he.
He also left?
Yes.
Yeah, they got two people gone.
So, you know, they're down to man. And obviously they serve us more than just a lot of other.
Sure.
And I'm sure he is getting to things as, as fast as he can, but.
Fair enough, okay.
We've had them for a number of years, we've found that as far as we're concerned, they do absolutely superior work.
And for your perspective, they're cost-effective.
Yes.
And I'm, I, I don't do a lot of this, but it was, you know, it was a fairly expensive procedure to, to have that review and, um, for it to just get, keep getting kicked down the road.
Just request if maybe you guys could give a little.
Well, I'm considering, see, this is a three-week gap, right?
Yes.
So I will, I will significantly before the next meeting, I'll give Kevin all.
Thank you, fair enough.
There's no special permits or anything required for this, right?
Not for this.
I won't be here June 13th.
You won't be here June 13th?
No, I leave the 11th and will be back until like the 20th and I'm gone for two weeks.
We only need three.
Yeah, I figured. Three can.
Unless you watch the video.
I can do that, yeah. Yeah, I'll do it with a few drinks and, uh, by the poolside in Bermuda, I can definitely.
You're going somewhere good?
Bermuda.
Bermuda?
Yep.
I just got back from California.
I was in California last week.
Hopefully in the northern part of the state, not the southern part.
I was in Los Angeles. But I agree.
Hopefully you weren't in torrents of that area, cause I usually wear.
Los Angeles.
I wear Kevlar vest and, uh, make sure the rental car has got insurance.
My, my daughter graduated with her doctorate's degree.
Congratulations.
Twenty years old.
And she decided to leave the state, she's not staying.
She's back here.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, get the hell out of California.
Was gonna be a professor of some sort.
Good.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue to, uh, June 13th, so moved at, uh, let's say 6:45.
You said so moved all second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Alright, like usual.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, I got one more thing.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Enjoy Bermuda.
Yeah, this will be the last time. Oh, yes, it is.
It's a beautiful place.
Been going there since 97.
Gone and, gone to the bay. Where the pig swim.
No, I haven't been, I haven't been, no, no.
Really? I went once and we went, it was only a couple of years ago and it was pretty funny.
We're over on the, uh, western side over by the dockyards is where we typically stay. And it's nice and quiet, not crazy. It's an old English cottage environment. Except the guy who bought it from the family that had it for 200 years wants to turn it into a new one as well.
Of course he does.
It's not, that's not my style, so. We'll see, I told the wife we'll give it one more shot.
Then. You said Bahamas, Bermuda?
Bermuda, yeah.
Then you go to Bahamas?
No, then we, uh, go up to, uh, Booth Bay Harbor. See, I love Maine, it's nice and quiet. It's at the end of June, so it's not too hot, not, and just a little bit of cool at night, so.
Booth Bay is beautiful.
Water's cool.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not a big swimmer, I'll do my swimming in the middle.
That's a good date.
Yes, it is, today is, uh, my engagement anniversary.
That wasn't stupid, two plus three is five, so it was a month, yeah, it is.
How many years?
Twenty-seven. And she's put up with me longer, cause I knew her five years before that, so it's almost like 32.
I mean, my wife for 40.
Forty-five this July.
Yeah.
Forty years.
Yeah. Uh, I'm gonna need to abstain.
I will miss you.
And for the next two anyways.
We can't do anything, that's the problem.
Hmm, how's that work?
Hopefully by the end of this meeting.
I gave you abstaining on this one, you didn't on the last one.
Yes, I did.
It was one you didn't.
Anything to do with Billy. My wife's cousin.
Oh, we're gonna quiet mine.
That would be. Well, sign it, I mean, I guess we could go through and look it over, but we can't do anything. Cause we really need four to look it over, correct?
That's gotta, there's gotta be something along that, that.
No, that's the problem.
Alternative member? Tamika, alternative member, I just voted her in.
It is in, the, the alternative is in there, but we don't have one in Rutland yet.
We got one.
I said, I used the word yet like an ad.
Tamika, she's in. Uh. Well, that's a sad situation. That could happen on a lot of things, in terms of.
There, there's no recourse.
So where's?
Well, I don't know, Peter brought up something.
How does the four, when there's a four-member board?
It's a five-member board.
But there's not five members.
There's officially five members.
Where's?
There's five members, five elected members on here, the newest lad has a cross.
Oh, I know where there's one missing, I forgot. Ah, now I know. Alright.
So.
I just, I thought that got erased, but it didn't.
There's five members.
Well, that's unfortunate, well.
Peter brought up something about a, was it a bi-lot meeting, about a out of necessity.
So.
That a, that a commissioner body could conduct business even if they didn't have a quorum.
Well, I would like to just continue this until we figure that out, cause we've already gone through a lot of process to get it to this point.
Yeah.
And this is, is textbook of a, uh, a state law, it looks like it's out of the book. Goes in 50 feet, goes out 200 feet and.
Setback.[1703.26]
It's like, it's not my.
We're to ask them what we do in this situation, since it's probably gonna come up again.
I'm hoping that I will fix that.
Might be interesting to get some, some kind of an opinion.
That's awful. That's just unfortunate. I've kinda seen it coming.
Julian, an alternate will fix that because the state law allows for an alternate for special permits. So, just for, we can put an alternate, but they don't vote on anything but requirement of the, of the special permit. The one thing I'd. No, appointed. That's.
Tamika.
And it's, it was suggested to have it ratified by the select board. We, we do the appointment. But, um, we can, just to make it, everybody a happy family, make sure the select board doesn't have any issues by ratifying, but it's our.
I would, I'd, I would like to hear from town council.
That's what I was gonna say, Norm. We really need to get that. Yes. I just read it that way.
Come up quite often on things I even know about that.
Well, it's, it's bad if I'm out, cause I've unfortunately occasionally gotten sick and I've handicapped this board by not being here. There's only three.
Which, with this, I think I would rather postpone these rather than opening and continuing.
That's totally fine. No, don't, don't open them. Just do this, let's, uh, yeah. I'll just. Rather do that, cause there's so much paperwork to get it to this point that. We'll just wait till you hear that you have somebody for both of them. Figures the most textbook. Unquestioning whether they meet the, the criteria. I don't think I've made any more meet the criteria than these. Fifty feet wide, boom.
No, I looked them over. I, I didn't have, this is one of the few that's just simplistic.
Think it's on the big plan that he has. Cause it was the last one we just endorsed. This one, yes. Why don't we do this for probably?
I did both on the same.
You think they're just that date? Do you think they're resolved by then?
We have three weeks between the next meeting, so I think we actually have a chance, yeah.
Try it.
But we. Cause even if we hear back, to get an alternate, it's not gonna be done overnight.
That's fine. That's totally fine.
There are many town councils will say, there's something you can do in an emergency situation where you could get by for that, for that meeting, you know? We'll see what they say.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll wait to see, but I don't think so. From what I read from Mass General Law, that's the reason why they were pushing the alternate. So, when a situation comes up like this with a board and there's only three, the alternate can step in and handle the special permit.
There's no impeachment process?
Unfortunately, in Massachusetts, there's only two ways to, any elected official convicted of a felony or resign. Those are it. Those are your two. Unless you have a bylaw that can have a recall. Yep. And I'm not in favor of that, cause that's a slippery slope. In my opinion.
Yeah.
So we'll just need a motion.
Move on. That's all we can do.
I'll make a motion to continue till June. Postpone, I'm sorry. Postpone till June thirteenth at seven o'clock.
I did six forty-five.
Six forty-five is good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Interesting. It's all right. No rush. Small steps. I know.
I know.
Definitely, I know you guys got a, a pretty good surprise curve ball a couple of weeks ago.
We got more than that.
Cause I was, I was here when you were battling for the guy and.
Yeah.
Joe's a, Joe's a curve ball for me too, cause he was, he's my licensed engineer I could bounce stuff off of. I've lost.
I'm gonna say, I, I enjoy.
Licensed engineer.
With, with Joe.
Yep.
He knew a lot of things very clear.
He was my black and white, uh, licensed engineer that I could work with, but.
Where did he end up going?
Amesbury.
Amesbury?
Place from there. Family's up there. They've got more money and God, he'll never have to worry about, uh, not being able to buy a truck anymore. Needs a welder?
Right now, right near Hampton Beach.
Newberry Port's right next to it. Yeah.
Nice area. Good for him. All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
I'll see you soon.
Okay, uh, and guess what? Onward, we have nothing from engineers on Bryce Lemon or Britnall or Bear Hill too.
Bryce Lemon, the only thing I wanted to say. Do we send him a, send, uh, Clea a letter about the HOA, about get the rail trails cleaned up or?
At this point.
He's still, he's still in charge of it.
Yeah, and until he can, until he does the final cleaning on a detention pond.
Okay. I just was trying to help the young lad out.
But I am gonna.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to go round up the weeds on a rail trail. I mean, that's not big money.
And the reason why that steepness was there, I do believe is, D C I says you have to stop here because of the zone that it was in and all that. And she, that particular D C I girl left. Ocam and went to north, uh, West Boyleson, rather. It's out of that jurisdiction.
That was the only thing for Bryce Lemon I had.
If I may, I, so I noted today when I was doing the finances, um, that we're gonna have to send a note to Clea, um, because there's not much money left, um, for the Britnall estates or for Bryce Lemon. So, we're gonna need both of those accounts replenished to pay any bills moving forward. So, I'm gonna reach out tomorrow.
So, what do we ask for? Two grand, three grand, five? Five grand. I like it. Five K each. Show me the money, baby. I did take a drive through Bear Hill too. That's seriously getting finished quickly. There are houses going up, uh, foundations going in quickly.
So, um, I don't know.
Just to, because he was saying, how come you were here at the last meeting, but I sat there. I didn't see, sit with you guys.
No, no, you were out, you were out of the table and in the audience.
Yeah.
Just because it's not within forty-eight hours, Norm, you can tell me. I think we're sort of doing what I was gonna bring up about the alternate. If we go to town council and ask that question. So, the next thing I was gonna ask, um, do, I guess we need to wait it comes back from town council, cause I would say we should probably solicit, um, for a planning board alternate on the website, but we probably need to wait till the town council comes back. Okay, I'm good with that. I'm fine. All right. One step, like Julian said, one step at a time. I'm good with that.
It's one of those things where, you know, it sounds easy, but.
It's the but.
Takes time. Yeah. Who, who knows? Who knows? So.
Okay. Would you come more often? Because we never get out here at seven.
You could've set the bar high for Keith.
I've gotten through this thing somewhat.
Yeah.
Is this your copy, Norm? Of the original errors?
That just came in, so that's within forty, inside of the forty-eight hours, right? Or do we need to bring it up?
This fellow been in business.
Forever.
Forever.
At the bottom of, bottom of that one and then the top of the second, he's got his, his work history.
Yes, he has. Oh, God, Florida, Georgia. He's working his way up. Texas, he went west. Oh, said he rode a horse.
But did he milk a cow?
Yeah, did he milk a, uh, Warwick, Ward Island. Uh, maybe not there. But out in South Hadley, could've, yeah.
To Keith, so he can take a look at it.
That's possibly our alter, uh.
I, I think we can discuss this anyway. The, 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 the one thing particularly about him, he's expensive.
He is.
Ninety dollars an hour.
Plus travel money and travel expenses, which is my, mileage rate.
Anything back from anybody else? As a town planner.
Town planner. They, the, I saw this morning that Austin put the employment in, or maybe, maybe Tamika did. Yeah, okay, Tamika put it in, uh, for the, a town planner position. I just, again, this is me personally. I wasn't happy with the salary, cause I don't think, I think it's too low. It's my opinion. It's my opinion.
What was it, a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Eighty-five thousand.
Oh, half.
About what Dave was making, but.
The trouble is, Tim, is that's what we already budgeted.
Yeah.
For FY twenty-four.
Yeah, well, they've, they've got a lot of budget issues that they haven't followed, like police and fire raises that weren't budgeted correctly, but. Anyhow, we can, but as a board, we can increase if we want. I mean, we're gonna give forty-one thousand away, so.
Temporarily. I don't wanna get into that habit.
Yeah.
Just the only thing regarding this temporary guy, I've talked with Austin a little bit, because obviously at that price, we'd be running up the bill real quick.
Yes.
So, uh, I mentioned that I was thinking, you know, that we would, we need someone to have some office hours. But I was thinking like one day a week, maybe six hours on one day a week.
Based on that, he's not gonna be available until the fall.
Well, I think there's some gaps in between there. I haven't looked at the calendar with it.
Has Janet or anybody from down there, Central Mass, talked to you at all?
No, no, nothing, nothing from them. I mean, Dave, Dave scoured just about every way he could.
Yeah, I know.
And he got nothing.
Janet, anyways, briefly.
Well, she was saying that they don't have enough staff themselves.
I know.
So, and I was even thinking that, uh, you know, if we have this guy, as far as meetings are concerned, he could join by Zoom.
That Zoom stuff.
It's not, it's not the greatest. You know, but, you know, hey, two hour drive back and forth just for a two hour meeting.
Doesn't make sense to me. We gotta economize.
Is there any other planner around that we could? You know, just for a while until we can find somebody just to help us.
Want me to call Mike and see what he's got in Gardner?
Yeah, exactly.
I'll give him a call. I have no problem doing that. I got a good relationship with Mike. Do you have somebody we can, we're not looking for, you know, forty hours a week. We're looking for eight, eight, six support.
I know that Holden just picked up a new fella down there, but maybe we could get him for a time.
Consulting work?
What kind of, um?
Skill set?
Yeah, what, what, can you, can you evolve someone into a planner or they just, it's a dedicated?
It's like working at CMRPC out of college, getting experience and then maybe use as an assistant planner or something like that and work into it.
Certification for a planner.
Yeah.
That, uh, that we would wanna have.
So, it's a rare job and a rare skill set. It's not such a bad job asking Mike Nichols, is there anybody that he knows?
He's got a wide, I mean, he's got a wide net.
Yeah.
And honestly, I would probably, Tamika, to make it a, to keep me out of the loop, talk to Austin, cause he's got a relationship and let him make that call.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so he is putting his.
If you wouldn't mind just asking Austin to give Mike a call, cause I don't wanna step on his toes. He's, he's the new guy. Let the new guy do his job and keep me. I don't mind giving him a call.
Idea of Mike, because Mike was, he's got a, he's got a little bit background of Rutland.
Yeah, what we need and what we're, and really, this, this temporary plan is gonna not only be us, he's gonna help to help out with RDIC, cause those questions are gonna come in as soon as Harvard Plastic Homes or HPDD starts. So. That's why I was so. I said this to Norm walking in. I understand the salary, but we're sort of asking for a planner that does a lot more than just planning. We're almost asking for a town engineer slash planner. So, that's why I'm more apt to. Be on the DPW chief level. That's my opinion.
Dave set the bar high with documentation and.
Yes, he did. We, we. That's why Holden's getting somebody they should be very happy about.
Which again, talking, talking with Austin, you know, they, they posted Joe's job not that long ago.
Yep.
He says they've got over twenty inquiries already.
Really?
Oh. Well, that'll be good. When I was talking to you and I think I talked to Austin, I did a quick search and there were like six or seven towns around us. Not, you know, Paxton. They were all looking for planners and some of them have been on the, on their websites for three to four months. Now, I don't know if they got anybody, but they were still listing them, so that sort of worried me. I'm like, damn it. This is where you've got a, a small skill set and a lot of people have retired. And it's not something you go to school for. You pick it up or you, you get a, a civil degree in, in municipal business and then decide to go into planning, so.
Yeah, it's start young.
Yes, yeah.
Back of my mind, I thought about Carl Christensen. Would he like to come back? I don't know how old he is. Well, he is, it was two generations. His father was DPW director also in Rutland, so he became one. And his son still works for the town of Rutland, so it would be nice for maybe the third generation to step in. But anyways, um. Yeah, I, I desperately think because of what's going on in town, we do need a DPW director. I don't wanna, you know, go and bother Chris for crying out for small, small things for Crepe's, cause he's got his hands full.
Yeah, there's really nobody able to watch the pot that's out on Palmagussit, cause typically that would be somebody in Joe's row just keeping his finger on the pulse of the state contractors.
Especially being.
And that was good to pass to Dave before Dave goes, I'm going to Holden.
So. I will entertain a motion.
So moved. To adjourn. Thirty-seven.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.